Good morning. It's 10:00 AM on March 12, 2024. I hereby call the regular meeting of the Story County Board of Supervisors to order, and would invite you to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. Would entertain a motion for adoption of the agenda.
So moved.
Second, Faisal?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Agenda is adopted. Now, we have public comment number one. This comment period is for the public to address topics on today's agenda. So anybody in the room or on Zoom, either if you're in the room, come forward. If you're on Zoom, raise your hand, and I'll give you just a minute to see if anybody wants to make a comment. Okay, seeing no one, I will close public comment. And next is consideration of proclamation recognizing March 17 through 23, 2024 as National Agriculture Week. Supervisor Faisal, would you start us out?
Sure. Whereas we recognize the unique and irreplaceable value that farmers, ranchers, foresters, farmworkers, and other agricultural stewards have contributed to our nation's past and present. America's agriculture sector safeguards our nation's lands through sustainable management, ensures the health and safety of animals, plants, and people, provides a safe and abundant food supply, and facilitates opportunities for prosperity and economic development in rural America. Whereas the American farmer, a national symbol of strength and strong moral fiber, has displayed ingenuity in times of prosperity and perseverance in the face of hardships while supplying our state, nation, and the world year in and year out with an abundance of high-quality agricultural goods and products. And whereas we recognize Iowa's leadership role in agriculture and the culture of innovation and entrepreneurship that drives the agriculture industry, rural communities, and farm families around the state.
And whereas we acknowledge the leadership of Iowa farm families in adopting new technologies and management practices to produce food, fuel, and other products more efficiently and sustainably than ever before. And whereas Iowa's agricultural industry includes global leaders in all sectors who have continued to grow and persevere during an incredibly challenging year. Advanced manufacturing, agricultural processing, animal health, plant sciences, predictive agriculture, renewable resource fuels, and many more. Now therefore be it resolved that we, the Story County Board of Supervisors, do hereby proclaim March 17 through 23, 2022 as National Agriculture Week and encourage all citizens of Story County to celebrate farmers and agriculturalists in your families and communities. I move the proclamation.
2024. No, no, I think it was just moving too fast.
I said 2023?
Two.
Two? 2024, I stand corrected, so I will move the proclamation.
Thanks.
Merkin, aye. Faisal?
Aye.
Okay, the proclamation is adopted. Thank you. Okay, next we will go on to agency reports. Stacy Schuler with CCJ. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
And you need to move it close to you.
Is this good? Testing. That's good. Excellent. Well, it's a pleasure to be here this morning, and I want to thank the Story County Board of Supervisors for their continued support of the important program of the Center for Creative Justice and Probation Services. Thanks to your continued support, we have been able to provide services to approximately 700 individuals in the last fiscal year. And we've had a lot of, you know, a lot of great accomplishments. We've made a difference in a lot of people's lives, and my staff and I are just grateful to be able to continue to do the work that we do to help citizens of Story County every single day. So in looking at our annual report, in fiscal year 2223, we had an 89.5% successful completion rate. This is out of 277 individuals. Although we served 700 throughout the year, 277 completed in fiscal year 2223 successfully, or 248 completed successfully out of the 277. When looking at recidivism rates, 87.3% of clients did not reoffend in the year following their successful completion. And we have started tracking the three-year recidivism rate. So for fiscal year 2223, 85.5% of our clients from the three years prior did not reoffend in the three years following their release, their successful release from probation. So as you're aware, CCJ's probation officers specialize in the areas of substance use, mental health cases, some cases involving violence or threats of violence. And so we complete a risk assessment when the individual is sentenced to probation that is completed within 30 days of their initial sentence to CCJ. In looking at the rates for the risk levels, about 15% of our clients were at an intensive risk level, 30% at a normal risk level, about 40% at a minimum risk level, and another 15% at an administrative risk level. As these services are so important to our communities, you know, we take the sentencing recommendations from the judge that are court-ordered, and we use this to identify the different types of concerns that may be contributed to the crime. About 75% of our cases usually involve substance use. This is typical. This is a historical trend. About 15% mental health, 11% domestic violence. One thing that I thought it was important to do in the last fiscal year is because we submit statistics to the Bureau of Justice Statistics, our definitions of these types of offenses and cases previously were a little more generalized. So I took what we're reporting to the Bureau of Justice Statistics, and I divided that into an all-other violent crime category per their definitions, a property damage category, and then an other category. And the other category with the 11%, that would include things like disorderly conduct, harassment, interference with official acts. So this gives us the opportunity after the risk assessment to develop a case plan with individuals. As we're developing these case plans, we also refer to the sentencing order to see the conditions that are court-ordered. Another thing that we started doing in the fiscal year is we started tracking not just who was court-ordered to substance abuse evaluations and treatment, but started dividing those out. So for successful completions of substance abuse evaluations, about 97% of our people that were court-ordered to that specific requirement completed. From there, so 196 people were actually court-ordered to receive a substance abuse evaluation. From there, 81% were, or 81 people were required to follow up on substance abuse treatment. 85% successfully completed that treatment. In the fiscal year, 126 people were court-ordered to complete a drinking driver's course. 94% completed that. 26 people were required to complete a mental health evaluation. We had a 70% successful completion rate of that. Of those 26 people, an additional 18 people were required to complete mental health treatment, and 72% completed that. 20 people were court-ordered to complete the Iowa Domestic Abuse Program. 65% successfully completed that. And then 20 people were court-ordered to complete anger management with a 90% success rate. So looking at the impact that we have, I think this all goes into just the pride that my probation officers take in their work and the pride that our agency takes in helping people make better choices, helping them make a difference in their lives, being referred to resources that they didn't necessarily know were available to them. I continued on to provide a breakdown of age, race, and ethnicity, and income levels. The thing that speaks to me here is we have around 70% of our people that are below the federal poverty level. That's the guideline that we use at our sliding fee scale. And so that's where this data is drawn from, where they fall in the sliding fee scale. So we work really hard to provide a service to individuals that are below the federal poverty level and, you know, give them a support that they might not otherwise have. We've had a lot of positive results and feedback from our clients. In the fiscal year, 100% of our clients reported a better understanding of community resources based on participating in our program. In addition, 99% reporting, reported having made a positive change based on their participation in probation services. We continue to collaborate with, you know, as many agencies as possible. Anytime we hear of new agencies, we, you know, we seek them out. We try to get a sense of, you know, what are the appropriate referrals to their services? What insurances do they take? Try and help steer clients toward what they need to do to be able to access these services. Is there something with eligibility that is impacting whether or not they are able to obtain the services that they need to complete? And we do this through our partnerships. We have an increased use of volunteers throughout the fiscal year, and we are just very proud of the work that we do. So I would take any questions.
You have questions?
I don't have, I don't have questions. I sit on the board, so if you have questions.
Okay. Yeah, I was kind of surprised at the large group, large number of people who are below 150% of the federal poverty guideline. What percentage of your clients are students? Is it student population? Because I know they often fall below.
Right, so in looking at our student population, about a third of our population is students. And I tend to see, because of the way that their income is reported, that they are, they are, they tend to fall within the middle bracket, the 150 to 200%. We continue to see an increase in cases that are, cases that involve individuals with extreme amounts of past trauma, homelessness, you know, transportation issues, that type of thing.
Okay. And, and what, what, what do you think is the biggest unmet need that your clients have? I know you have a lot of partnerships, you work with a lot of agencies, but what are you seeing in terms of trends, just needs that aren't being met?
Well, and, and it was interesting when I attended the Untapped Workforce presentation with the, the Chamber of Commerce. One of the discussions that we were having is the fact that with clients, if they can't get housing, they can't necessarily have good hygiene to be able to attend their work regularly. You know, so I, I think it's kind of a circular thing where without the housing, you can't get the money to, you know, pay for necessities to be able to continue to work, and you add in transportation to that mix. And it's, you know, even, even some of the clients that are able to obtain employment, you know, it might only last a few weeks or a month if they're lucky because there's other barriers impacting their ability to continue to work.
I think that's a really good point. It's some people, it's just like, well, there's job, there's got to be jobs out there. Just go get a job. And it is, how do you do that if you don't have a place to stay? If you don't have a mailing address? If you don't have a place for your stuff and a way to get there? Yeah.
You don't have an ID, so you.
Exactly, yeah, yeah. There are just a lot of barriers that, that we need to, we need to work on so people can get and keep jobs, so. Okay.
Exactly.
I don't have anything else. That was a great report. And I love the statistics that you're putting together. I think those are very good. Keep doing that.
Well, and thank you again for your continued support. You make a huge difference in the lives of the people in Story County, and we appreciate it.
Well, and I just want to say it as, as a member of, of the board. I've sat on the CCJ board for many years. And one thing that I have always appreciated is the fact that CCJ as an agency looks at the, the clients that they have, the folks that are coming in as a whole person, and looks at all of the needs that that person has rather than the, the one thing that might have connected them to CCJ. And then they use that as an opportunity. You use that as an opportunity to make their lives better and to open doors for them and to make sure that they have that continued support through the whole process. It is, it is truly a joy to be part of CCJ and watch the work that you all do. And also to recognize that there's a very little funding that comes from the county and through the asset process to CCJ because so many of your clients are students or from other jurisdictions. There's a lot of support that you get from the community directly. There's a lot of work that goes into keeping CCJ running, and we appreciate the work that you do.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, we'll move on to consideration of minutes.
I would move approval of minutes as presented.
Second, Faisal?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Minutes are approved. Consideration of personnel actions?
I'd move approval of personnel actions.
Second. Faisal?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Personnel actions are approved, and on to claims.
I would move approval of claims as presented.
Second. Faisal?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Claims are approved, and now consent agenda. Anything to pull?
No.
Okay.
I'd move approval of consent.
Second, Faisal?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Consent agenda is approved, and we have no public hearing items. So next is additional items. We have Anna Henderson from Animal Control and Joby Brogdon from Facilities Management to talk about a vehicle, I think. Good, welcome. Make sure your microphones are on.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning.
I'm gonna probably do most of the talking on this one since I helped Anna prepare this and kind of go through the quotes. I kind of put as much detail as I could in the memo I provided for Anna. So I mean, the gist of it is, is their current vehicle is 10 years old. Overall, the vehicle's in pretty good shape, but it doesn't meet their needs is the main reason for replacing it. And it was, it is budgeted for in FY24. Kind of the two key things of why we went with the crew cab truck is they need interior space for hauling animals that is climate-controlled, which their current vehicle is just a regular cab truck. And the current truck doesn't, we kind of spect this in a worst-case livestock hauling with their livestock trailer. Their current vehicle doesn't have the towing capacity to handle if they had to pick up some cattle off the side of the road. So we tried to incorporate that. And as you can tell, the quoted vehicles are over what is currently budgeted. Kind of net of about $7,637. We're, and that's with anticipating, we plan to auction off their existing vehicle in lieu of trading it in. Because I feel it's worth at least $14,000 on the open market. And most of the trade-ins, you can see, they were giving us $10,000 for the vehicle. So essentially what we're looking for is the $42,962 from Deary of Ames. It was the second lowest quote we received, but it is a vehicle that is currently available. Where the lowest quote we received was from Stu Hanson's out of Ankeny, but it has a three-to-four-month lead time. And Deary of Ames is a Story County company, so. And it lost my place there. But essentially, yeah, what we're looking for is it will need a new topper because the current topper that is on the existing truck would not fit the new one. So with the total cost of $46,637, with, and then we anticipate selling the existing truck for, we should get at least $14,000 out of it, possibly more. So what we're looking for right now today is approval to purchase the truck from Deary of Ames with the, with the gross price of $46,637. And then there's $25,000 in FY24 for this truck. And then once we sell the, the existing truck, it would be an additional $7,637.
Okay, any questions?
No, I thought the memo was full of information.
Yeah, I tried to hack as much in there as I could.
Yeah. So, oh, go ahead. You have questions?
No, I do not.
Okay. So I believe the motion needs to be for the full amount of the purchase plus the topper and not including the anticipated trade-in.
Correct.
Okay, so I would, I would move approval of purchasing a 2023 Ram 1500 Crew Cab and Truck Topper for the gross of price of $46,637.
I second the motion. Any further questions or discussion? Okay, Faisal?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. It's approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, discussion and consideration of additional costs related to CitizenServe payment processing and permission to use the county credit card. LeAnn Harder.
Good morning. A couple months ago, hard to believe already, Treasurer Rasmussen and I were before you, I think it was actually on your consent agenda though, asking for some funding to cover an unanticipated cost related to our Citizen Serve portal, our app, online application portal for a payment processing. At that point, we requested $72 a month that would go to Iced Tea. Since the time that we came and sought that approval, we did find out that we are not able to pay back Iced Tea via invoice. We'll have to pay directly to authorized.net, who is the vendor that is doing this for Citizen Serve. And they only allow it via credit card, so they cannot be invoiced. And unfortunately, the amount has gone up from $12 a month to $30 a month. It was not budgeted. This was a change that was not anticipated, I think even by Treasurer Rasmussen. This will essentially, if approved today, buy us some time that we can look at different alternate, alternatives as well, not only to Citizen Serve, but to the payment processing too. So it's really like a in-between measure between now and the end of the fiscal year. In May, I'll be back in front of you with some different options. But again, authorized.net does not do invoicing, so we need permission to use a credit card in addition to the addition, in addition to the increased amount. Are there any questions?
I have none.
I would move approval.
Second. Faisal?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Request is approved. And we have no departmental reports. And under other reports, we are back with LeAnn with the discussion and direction on amendment with City of Collins ARPA agreement.
I'm gonna just set the stage and then let representatives from the City of Collins come up here. I'm just reminder for the board and those present, the process that the board uses to consider amendments to the ARPA agreements are to bring an item forward on other reports as we're doing today and base our discussion today. Staff will receive any direction to amend contracts and then bring that forward for signature after the, the sub-recipient has signed it as well. So this is a request from the City of Collins. And specifically for the water project, they do have three projects. The food project has been finalized, and then the wastewater is well underway. But they, this was approved for $340,000. To date, they've used about $133,500. And I think they want to discuss with you how they would amend the remain, how they would amend and move the remainder around. Are there any questions on process for me?
No, thank you.
We've been saying this enough, so.
LeAnn, good morning. Good morning.
My clerk was afraid to come up here, so I made her keep up. Trying to overcome that anxiety. Yeah, thank you, LeAnn. We do have a request. You know, we, we were kind of, you were kind enough to award us three different grants when ARPA came up, and one was for our foods program, which went off brilliantly. The other one was for rehabbing our, our sanitary sewer system, which we've about got knocked out. And the last one was for the water portion. And the water portion, we actually had three sub-projects within that, that water. Oh, okay.
It just on the record, it sounds loud to you, but on the recording, it's.
It sounds real loud to me. Within those subcategories, we've, we've completed one of them, but obviously there was unanticipated issues that came along with that. And so we ended up spending a little bit more money than we, we had planned on. And saying that, we have roughly, I believe, about $205,000 left over of the grant to spend. And we have two other components that we wanted to address. One of those was to help residential homes. And the other was to make an improvement along our Fourth Avenue, which would allow us to potentially expand east and also provide better service for EMS response in case we ever had to do something like that. And we're at kind of a crossroads because we, we don't think we have enough to really tackle that Fourth Avenue like we had hoped, at least as far as we planned. We've also had some new guidance from the federal government regarding reporting and replacement requirements regarding lead lines to residential homes. And we're obviously pretty worried about that because that's, that's a big undertaking for a small town like us. And since we've already got something in place that would allow us to help some of those residential homeowners, we thought, well, maybe, maybe we should shift gears and put the emphasis towards that. Because, you know, we have a, you know, recent survey data dictated that a large portion of our population is within LMI status. And the idea of people being able to tackle those issues on their own would be not completely realistic. So the big question is, do we want to allocate our money to what might be, which could be growth towards the east, or what is? And those are current homeowners that probably can't handle improvements that, that may be dictated by the federal government. So I guess we're, we're kind of looking for some guidance from the, from the county. We'd like to request taking that 205 and just pushing out one project, sub-project, and focus on the other. But we want to make sure our request is consistent with county priorities. We want to make sure your input's part of that too. And so the, the request we have is slightly ambiguous, but I, I think as a city council, we were leaning towards helping the people that already are there. You know, the what is.
So option A, the lead water pipe.
That's, that's what we were leaning towards as, as a community. But once again, your support's essential, so we want to make sure you're on board with the conversation too.
Well, and that was, like you said, one of your sub-projects. That was part of your overall plan.
That's right.
When you applied. I think, you know, none of us have a crystal ball and know what, what things might come up as we move along. I, I think, you know, identifying a project that you think would be even more impactful from the projects you had already identified makes sense.
Do you have a cost estimate on replacing the lead water lines?
Well, yes and no. I can tell you what it's going to cost approximately per home. And we know that there's a large number of homes that are in the community, but we, realistically, it's probably not enough to fix every house in town, but we know we don't need to either. So what we anticipate is having to have some sort of, actually, I've talked with Greg Picklap a little bit about this, and I won't throw him under the bus by throwing his name out there, but about a, a process that would allow us to systematically, you know, hit some of the older homes in town and work our way up. But I, I believe that the 205 that we have here is going to be more than adequate to cover those needs. and work our way up. But I, I, I believe that the two oh five that we have here is going to be more than adequate to cover those needs. Per house, like I said, I, I'm the only person in town that's really built anything in the last ten years. And I've replaced a lot of water lines. And I can tell you right now, you're, you're looking at between five and eight thousand dollars approximately is going to cost per, per residential home. We have two hundred and twenty meters, and I can vouch as at least ten houses in town that do not need a new water line because I, I paid for those out of my own pocket. That, not an exact number, what you're looking for. And, and one of the other benefits is, is we can bypass some of the need for engineering costs because it's, it's some of the engineering that we have to, ate up some of the other money was dictated by the state because their requirements for it's public property. We're looking towards diverting some of that money towards residential property, which would help us avoid some of those costs, too. We'd be more efficient with the money, is what I'm trying to say.
I was kind of, what I was kind of angling at was, were you, did you think you would spend all the two hundred and five thousand? Can you spend it on this one, on this one project? It's eight thousand per house.
Well, and
So you don't have.
May not. We, we may end up coming back and either come back the, the county and say, listen, we, we can't do this, but we can still we, we can do this along our Fourth Avenue, this one piece of it, which would be consistent with the original application. Or we may came back and say that this was, you know, this covered all of our expenses. Of course, whenever you estimate a, a project, you should have a little bit of wiggle room in there. And of course, we didn't have enough wiggle room on the other part of it, but we hopefully will have plenty on, on this.
Took on a lot. You were doing a lot, a lot of different things.
We had a lot, lot of, you know, yeah, a lot of cookies in the jar.
Yeah.
And, but once again, if we don't use it all and we can't find acceptable use for whatever excess money we have for the county, then we would, obviously, that's money to be back to the county hopper.
Okay, and our, and what would your timeline be on this project, getting this done?
Well, we know we have, what's, do you want to know our guideline for spending the money for ARPA? What is it?
December twenty sixth, right?
Yes, but we need to have it all allocated by December of twenty four. We can't reallocate after that, and that's why I'm asking.
I see. That's a good question.
So we're just, we're looking for, and I, I'm sure you've talked with Leann about this many times, but what we're looking for is a, a plan, just kind of laid out for how you expect to be able to expend the full amount, what that timeline looks like, so that we can make sure projects are going to stay on track.
We, I mean, that, we, we can meet that easily. I, I believe that because we can have something in place. We, we have a pretty good idea. How do I say this?
Well, we.
We know the infrastructure that doesn't need fixed, so we know who to focus on. And we know if we have to go door to door and get people signed up for this program, this is not, it's, it's very doable.
And we would need, if we are going to reallocate any monies that wouldn't otherwise be used, we have to have some lead time. We can't wait till December thirty first of this year. In fact, we were kind of trying to have a sense of that by June. So would you have more, would you have an estimate of the number of houses and the, and the total project by June, do you think?
Well, the contracts are being, are being amended to require that you provide a, a plan, a schedule by which you will be able to.
If our timeline is June, we'll be June. We'll, we'll, we'll meet the county's requirements. I'll tell you that right now.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm not, I won't, we'll make sure we get it done.
Yeah, we just, you know, the ARPA money was just such a gift, you know, it was just such a wonderful thing to have, to be able to meet so many needs. We're wanting to, you know, the county is just wanting to use all, make sure all of it gets used for the purposes intended and that we don't have to give any of it back because that's money that we can't, that's not invested in Story County, so.
No, I'm, I'm hundred percent I agree with you. And we'll, like I said, June is our timeline, then we'll, we'll have it done by June.
Super.
And lead, lead pipes are definitely one of the top priorities with ARPA.
For sure.
Yeah.
I think, yeah, I think it's
That's appropriate.
I think looking at the problem you have in front of you now, you know, is really the thing to do, you know, the I, I like option A, so.
Very good. We appreciate it.
Okay, Leann, did you have anything you wanted to add? Or Greg?
Does that provide you enough direction, Leann?
Okay, got it. Okay, thank you. Thank you for coming, and thank you for all the good work you're doing.
We appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we have discussion and direction on economic development process and policies. Leann Harder and Andrea Wagner. Good morning again, and good morning, Andrea.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We are returning as directed from last week. And I am, I see Rhonda is on. I didn't know if Rhonda was going to provide any information. Or Lisa. Do you want to come up here and provide numbers? I'll turn places here.
Yeah, I can pull them. As we talked about at the budget work sessions, the, this, the FY twenty five TIF collections will pay off the debt that we have incurred. So we're going to only ask for two hundred and eighty two, a little over two hundred and eighty two thousand at this point in time. After that point in time, so from FY twenty six to FY thirty, the best guess I can give you for TIF is approximately nine hundred and ninety thousand could be collected or could be asked for up to, the up to fifty percent would be nine hundred and ninety thousand now. Due to the fact that, and I'm basing it on current, current estimates. Due to the fact that the levies I've gone down are, are going to go down this year, that all the entities are restricted somewhat, those numbers will probably decrease. I can't tell you how much. We don't know. The proceed, the, the, the requests or the policies that we're, she's looking at would, would be for FY twenty six. Because those have to be certified to the auditor by December first, if they're going, if you're going to incur any more debt, whether that be external debt or internal debt, internal debt being projects. So from twenty six to thirty FY, we, we were looking at approximately nine hundred and ninety thousand. At that point in time, the twenty year window is up for the first large projects, large TIF areas. So from thirty one, for thirty one and thirty two, we're looking at about two hundred and fifteen thousand. It will be the fifty percent.
Two hundred and fifteen?
And then from thirty three to thirty five, about a hundred and forty thousand. And then the last three years, because thirty eight is the last fiscal year that we have any TIF properties. It's about ninety seven thousand a year.
So these are all annual figures?
Yes. They're the fifty percent that you have
Okay.
determined is what you would take up to. Understand if you don't tip. So if you decide, okay, we're, we're not going to tip anything next year. We're not, we're not going to do any projects with TIF. We're not going to use it. It, it doesn't mean you can't ever again. It means that next year, those dollars just go back to the entities that, that they would, they just go into the entities where they're levying. I, I have, I, I included all the turbines that I have on my schedule that, that Rhonda runs a TIF estimator for. Is anything else, there's nothing else going on, is there? Well, then, what? Now, as, as every time we come and talk about TIF, we say this is estimates because we have no idea what the levies are going to be, and that's what they're based on.
And so if we, if we are to, if, if we were to open up the process again, there's nothing that says we have to approve all the projects that come forward. We, by approving it today, we are giving you the ability to start the process to accept applications.
Today's action would be direction to come back with a formal ask on the process to start taking applications. And you're right. And there, and even one year, we saw applications, but we then put a whole hold on the process, too. So there's, what you just said is correct.
Right. So by, by opening up, opening up the process again, we are not obligating ourselves to anything, but we are providing an opportunity to at least consider things next year. I think, I think that's really an, an important thing that we have in our mind. And that also, even if we, even if we do approve projects next year, they the, the, the question I had last week was, are we obligating ourselves many years ahead? And no, not unless we approve a project that would obligate us many years ahead. I think especially knowing, and, and thank you, Lisa, you spent a lot of time with me yesterday walking through all this. I think knowing that we have eight years left, six years left for the, the, the large TIF dollars, I think it's important that we keep it open and at least keep it as a consideration because I mean, this is not going to, we're not going to have the opportunity to tap into this, these funds in this way in the future.
So this is discussion and direction. So the direction would be to proceed to start the process. Is that what you're saying for FY twenty five?
That would make sense to me, but I don't know what makes sense to you.
I think you make a good point. It's, it's you know, keeping the door open for now.
Right.
And we don't, we're, we're, of course, we're always looking towards Des Moines and what's going to happen at the legislature. We know that there's going to be some more, you know, you know, there's more impacts of House File seven eighteen that we'll see in subsequent years. So I'm not, so, but I think it is I think it makes sense to proceed now and see how, see how things are going. So not, not close the door on it, but not say, yes, definitely, we're going to.
Right.
We're going to be doing applications.
Okay.
Well, with that direction, we'll be back next week, but it will probably be on your consent agenda, just to approve the policies so that we have the formal dates and everything in. And then we'll start the outreach, working with Greg on getting into communities.
Sounds good.
Thank you. Thank you, Lisa.
Yeah, thank you for the information. That's helpful. I do not, next is upcoming agenda items, and I don't have any. Do you?
No.
Okay.
Oh, no. Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. No, you're not done. I tried. Okay, ARPA update.
Actually, not a lot of change since the last time I presented to the board. We did get two. Since two weeks ago, we did get two drawdowns from new sub recipients. One is Access did submit one. So they did upward mo they've not yet met their projections, but they've done upward movement in total funding drawdowns. And then City of Nevada did submit a drawdown for their entire amount. So I should have actually put them in red. I did not. But they are, they are completed in regards to the funding element. I'll just, are there any questions? I mean, you guys have seen this now for a few weeks. Is there any additional information you'd like to see in it, in what's been incorporated to the reports?
I have them available.
No, it's very thorough. Thank you.
Yeah. I am, I am a little, still a little concerned about YSS and their plan for drawing down drawing down funds.
We and I, I share that concern. We've not yet finalized the staff dis, staff discussions with YSS. We're waiting for some, we're waiting one on YSS, two for the state auditor's office to answer some questions that YSS had posed. And I've not heard back yet, and I'll, I'll follow up with them. YSS and Roland are our two largest, and they are way below their projections. I, both of them are the ones that will probably cause the most heartburn, I think. What was the other one? Roland?
Roland. Sorry.
They've done about a hundred and ten thousand out of a million.
Plan is to have the forms go out. Report, the next quarterly reports are due April third. The plan is to have the reports asking where, the reports that will help draft their plans for their total spend down.